All right, we'll call the meeting to order.
That's an order question.
Welcome, everyone. Gosh, we had a pretty good turnout.
How you doing?
I'm doing just fine, thank you. A little tired, maybe, a little road weary.
Jeremy and Bowman.
Yeah, are we just Jeremy and Bowman?
Well, Bowman always tells me if he's not coming, usually. And Wyndham.
And Howie. Let's just make sure I didn't get a note from one of them, but I don't think I did. I was driving, so I couldn't check.
You come back from Montpelier, is that what you said?
I just came back from Montpelier.
You just stick it to your windshield, and then it's like, you're holding it, it's all lethal.
I have Bluetooth, but I do not touch my keys. Yes, people are still on their cellphones in cars, makes me nervous. So, we called it to order, it says on the agenda, Stephen put on the agenda, and obviously, you and I approved the agenda, where it's introductions. Do we need introductions?
Yeah, certainly, our public.
Well, yeah, that's not like I don't know who they are, but...
Jane Olstead, Social Studies Department.
Does everybody know Jane?
I don't.
You've just been here so long, Jane, I just haven't ever...
Jane Olstead, Social Studies Department.
What year, but confess, when was it?
Yeah, you've been here before you, wasn't it?
1998.
Yes, you're here before you. Well, we're glad to have you here. Hey. It comes Bowman, I knew if I didn't get a note from you, you'd be here. So, nice to see you. Let's look at the agenda now. Members of the public, well, Jane, I'm sure you're here for the thing on the agenda. And you all know, everybody's met, of course. Okay. All right. We all know each other. So revisions or corrections to the agenda? Anything?
No?
Bruce. Are they adopting the minutes? Is it December 10th for the board minutes?
I don't know how, I corrected this, but I don't know how it got changed again, but I don't... Which where are we?
It is the draft minutes of the 10th.
Is this mine?
Why does it say 12 here? I don't know, I have one that says the 10th.
Well, mine's...
What date are they supposed to be?
He's corrected his, the last one you sent out is this one.
Well, let me see, what's the 10th?
This would be the one that you just sent out.
The minutes were from the 10th.
See, we were supposed to meet on the 9th, and we had a snowstorm, if you all remember, so we met on the 10th. Not the 12th. So if your agenda is one of the ones that says the 12th, it should be changed to the 10th. I don't know how it happened, but there are obviously some wrong version floating around.
Minutes, that agenda, did it say December 10th, or?
The one he handed out tonight. But the one that was sent to the board by email said the 12th. And they're all nodding their heads, so that's work, because I just hope tomorrow.
And Emily, you've got a report on the Career Center.
Do we have that on here?
Yeah, but I didn't make it. You did.
Oh, to the Career Center, oh.
About the Career Center thing.
Oh, yeah, you did, you and I were both there. Where were you going, the legislative thing?
I can't remember.
Yeah, you were there.
Oh, okay. Well, I was.
We were both there, so we'll give a report, thank you. We missed you.
If I can't remember I was there, it's gonna be a pretty sketchy report. Oh, my goodness.
I remember it.
Thank you so much, Emily.
I'd rather have been there.
I remember, and I was in the hawkeye. All right. Any other revisions or corrections to this agenda? If not, we're gonna move forward. I just want to say, I'm hoping we're gonna get out of here real fast tonight, because I'm a little tired.
Didn't help me say anything.
Yeah, I think we should try to move things along tonight. I know I have to leave for Montpelier early tomorrow morning, too, and I'll be due to... When am I leaving?
As early as me? I'm leaving at 6:00. I left at 6:00 today, too. Okay, so we're on correspondence. Correspondence?
I have not, yeah.
I was thinking I got something, it might have been from the ESBA.
This, I might bring up my report.
I'll check. It wasn't something that was critical, it may have been some, it was probably just a report from the ESBA. And I forgot to grab it this morning, when I left at 6:00. Okay, so we'll move on to administrative reports, principal reports, studies.
Sure, I wrote a principal's report.
Yes, you did.
Focusing on the work we're doing in Atlas and the Curriculum Mapping Database, that teachers continue to spend time on twice a month during faculty meetings, and I wanted to give you an update of progress and the next steps ahead. And I also included in the report a couple of the charts, that, these are just simple ones, there are much more to be coming when the database is complete. One was a unit overview, which is all of the required courses in Health, Family, Consumer Science, and Physical Education, so that you could see it, like, at a glance, all the units at once, what is it they cover. And that was not something that was done before, at least in the years that I've been here, that they could see it like this. And then, of course, if you do, say, a 7th grade view, which includes three of these, basically all of these subjects, and then seeing what the other units happen in their other 7th grade courses, and then allows possibilities for alignment, team teaching, curriculum integration. So this is one tool that I want to share with you. Another one that I, that was embedded in the report was the way assessments are divided up in English classes, grade 7 through 12. So, like, on the last page here, I hope that you all were able to see it, so that you can see that almost 13% of their grade is based on exam, 8% on their quiz, and then they can look at this and say, do we think we have this right? And as a faculty, we looked at it from every department, so in mathematics, more than half of students' grades is based on exams, whereas if you look at music and art, more than half their grades are based on projects. So, it's already yielded some valuable data for us to have, for the first time, a bird's eye view of our curriculum. I don't want to talk about this too long, I can take your questions, because I would like us to spend more time on the proposal for Social Studies, but that was a really quick overview.
That was a quick overview. Questions, comments? I'm looking at it, I forgot my tablet from the table.
I have some questions, but I think I'll take them up with Durin later. I'll take them up later.
Okay, is there something relevant that the board may want to hear?
Well, I just, the last few questions are very important, when I read through it on the last page.
Yes.
How does it remain a dynamic tool when teachers are already committed to two other online information systems, and I'm gathering that that's been worked out?
No, it has not been worked out.
Okay, that was concerning me a little bit.
Those are questions for the future for us.
That's what these questions are for.
Okay. And the last one was, how do we prioritize addressing gaps that are not subject to state assessments, and so that's not included in the Atlas? It is.
Right now, Atlas includes all of the required courses for graduation. And there are things that we know as educators that are important to teach, that aren't part of that core, part of Social Studies, or Health, or English.
These are the things that you listed, during...
That we, yes, like financial literacy is a key one, that we have an elective in Career and Business Finance, but we don't have, it's not a requirement, though the state standards say it should be a requirement.
Is that addressed in the other online programs that you're using? You mentioned two others.
Just as, just as an elective. It's not required, so...
Do we need three? I mean, am I asking?
Three what?
Online assessment programs?
The three programs that are listed here, where it says Power School, Teachers' Website and Websites and Alice, those are, have different purposes.
Different uses.
And none of them are about assessment, per se. Those are not about testing. The first one, Power School, stores grades and attendance data. The second one, Teachers' Websites, so you can learn all about their course, and see what homework assignments there are. And Atlas is the database.
Right.
All different uses.
All right, good work.
Yeah. Plus, there's a standardized test for that part of Atlas.
Yes, coming from outside, yeah.
Power School's been in place for quite some time now.
Yes, at least 10 years.
10 years or something, like that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions for Durin on her principal's report? Thank you very much, by the way, for sending it so early. If you get a chance to review it, it's really helpful, because there's a lot always in your reports, so...
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move on to the Social Studies proposal. I would say this is three years in the making. We have been... We have been talking, because the Wyndham Central Supervise Reunion has provided what they call GLAM Days, non-grade level academic meetings, for a grade level across the Supervise Reunion, or at Leland and Gray it would be a department meeting, and sometimes it's been a grade level meeting, too, with all the 7th grade teachers, for example. But the Social Studies teachers have spent enough time together to discover that much of the shortcomings in their curriculum instruction and assessment is that only US history has been required, and that the prerequisites for the content and the skills that the students needed to have learned and practiced beforehand, not all students come with, by the time they get to junior year, US history. Because currently, while you need three credits to graduate in Social Studies, only one of them is specified, and that's US history. And in order for us to really go deep, and actually, perhaps impart more civic engagement and a deeper understanding of democracy, then, rather than more focused on, you know, so focusing on dispositions as well as content and skills, we arrived at this proposal. And that they had been working for the last, I'd say, three years on this curriculum alignment, to make sure that the courses are sequential. And at this point, what we're proposing is that not increasing the graduation requirement for Social Studies, but specifying the graduation requirements. So similarly, in science, you need four science credits to graduate, but they must include Biology and Earth Science. And virtually, everybody takes the 9th grade science class, Introduction to Chemistry and Physics. So it might as well be a requirement. That is not the case, and plus, they have to have science elective. That is not the case in Social Studies, where it's just one course required, one specific course required. And I thank Jane for coming this evening, if you wanted to speak more to that. We also hope that with this, I could say somewhat of a consolidation of the courses, that the 9th, 10th, 11th graders have an expectation, or we already know for 11th graders, have an expectation of what courses they would be in, that will help with the master schedule as well. So there'll be fewer scheduling conflicts, because we know, well, all the 9th graders will be in these sections, just as they are in English and Science right now, same with grade 10. Questions, or Jane, did you want to share anything more?
Well, the only thing I want to say is that, from a US history standpoint, we, I cannot get beyond Watergate, and that's only on a good year. So, this year, I got up to Vietnam. And, so that leaves half a century roughly that's not addressed at all. And that's where we started, we said, so how are we going to get this in? A couple of ideas that we thought about, we're having, was, one idea was having another Social Studies, US History course that was required for another term, so they would take the second half of the century, everything after World War II. But that would require that kids take an additional Social Studies. So, scheduling it was difficult, trying to get around the fact that, you know, some kids may, if you still only need three Social Studies credits, it's a good possibility that they either wouldn't take the new course, or they wouldn't have taken the first course. And if they didn't take the first course, the new course wasn't very helpful. So that's where we started. So what we decided to do is try a theme-based curriculum, so that, for instance, you would take terrorism, in my world, because I teach US history, I would take terrorism from the 1900s right up to today. Okay? And so to give kids perspective, and, you know, to understand that the labor movement didn't only occur in the 1910s, and that terrorism didn't only occur in the last half of the century, just to give a couple of exceptions.
I'd observe that the difficulty that history people face is that the content keeps getting longer and longer.
Truly. You know, we've been doing this for, I've been here 17 years, I've been teaching US history, probably in the school, probably 12 years, and the last 10 years full-time, and they, we've always only gotten to Vietnam, even when Bob Tibo was teaching it. So 17 years has gone by, and we're not talking about those, we're just not keeping up. So it's a problem, you know, and at what point do you say it's irrelevant?
That's a wonderful idea, though, of topics, that you can see how they start, and they go all through history, and that gives you a deeper understanding of the actual topic. And how it's grown and changed, and that makes it relevant, I would think, more so than just all the facts and...
When I taught Global Studies, it was easy, I did everything by topic, and sort of pinned it to a geographical location, but, so that it was an easy, easy thing to do. European history isn't quite as easy, but you can do the same thing with European history as you do with US history. So those are the two courses that I teach now that are required.
Any idea if this is gonna change the way colleges look at the courses, the course titles?
I doubt it. But I don't know that for sure. I don't know if Durin or Stephen have any thoughts on that.
If I could add that, while we've called it Social Studies 1, 2, and 3, that's not what it says in the Program of Studies right now. So I wouldn't be asking to approve these course titles, but the requirement of the three courses, I want to work more with the Social Studies Department about having more descriptive titles. Because we don't really have any classes, other than Foreign Language, that have a title like that, instead, the titles are descriptive. And so, we haven't talked about that yet, but I don't think it'll be difficult.
But I don't think it'll be that hard. So for instance, Jews will take Social Studies 3, US in Relation to a Globalized Society, and that might be the title of the course. So that people would know, you know, a college would know, okay, that's a US history-oriented topic. So I don't think it will. Brown and Borough has History 1, 2, 3, and 4, and I think that those are the course titles, so it's, so I don't, and they haven't, it's been that way for a long time.
Is that your concern, does that kind of get at what you were talking about?
Exactly, yeah. And I'm sure it's History 1, something after, when they send the transcripts out.
They probably will.
These are all semester-long classes, aren't they?
Yes, no, these are, sorry, yes, they're semester-long courses.
Yeah, as I said, it's a great point, though, because colleges, they look at that name, so if you can give it a great name, whatever the course is, I mean, it's, it looks great on the transcript, much better than just, you know, Social Studies 1, 2, or 3, so I urge you to come up with something great for the names of these classes.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, sophomore, the sophomore class is Conflict in an Emerging Modern World, so conflict.
Other comments or questions? Go ahead.
I'm just curious, I, Social Studies 1, basically starting in the middle 1700s and then moving on in time from there. Do we cover at all the 10,000 years of history before that?
Well, in grade 7 and 8.
Okay.
Yeah, because grade 7 and 8 right now, and the state standards say that 7 and 8 is supposed to cover the dinosaur era or something. I mean, it's outrageous, but that's what the state says. And then they're supposed to bring them up through, by 8th grade, the end of the Civil War. How you get there, it's not my problem, that's the way I look at it. But, but the state, that's what the state says, so the old, the really old ancient history is supposed to be already covered in grade 7 and 8.
If I could just say, so 7th grade Social Studies is called Ancient History and Geography. And so they look at early civilizations around the world, and they spend an enormous amount of time on geography, and the science of geography and geology. So, the, so the early civilizations are addressed then, and in a sense, it continues, 8th grade being the bridge between that curriculum, and 7th grade to the high school curriculum, because he's already beginning with a thematic approach with a, I mean, I'm gonna have to bring it up, but it's, he revised it this year, so it would be in alignment moving forward. When I say he, I'm talking about Jason Spurling. With, like, North American indigenous cultures, and early colonialism, or actually, Age of Exploration, and also going back around ancient Rome, where they do ancient Greece in 7th grade, and then Roman 8th grade, and then Rome being kind of this bridge to what became our modern era. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Other comments or questions?
What, what do you think this will do to some of the currently existing history electives? I mean, you know, we've now said you take these three, so...
Yeah, but we still, I mean, we've had to teach these anyways. So, for instance, I teach Economics as an elective, and that won't change, I'll still be teaching that.
Economics as a Social Studies, okay?
Yeah, so because there'll be room in the schedule, I mean, basically, what we're doing is we're taking the required courses that we already teach, we're reconfiguring them to meet these, but there'll still be the, the Social Studies, the History of War will still be there. Economics, Military History, that's what I meant, Economics will still be there, there'll still be room in the curriculum for that. But those are separate electives.
But those will be electives that we'll be taking now to fulfill the three Social Studies credits for graduation?
Yeah.
Since you've dictated the three, do you see those maybe getting less attention from students?
I, no, I doubt it, I don't think so. I mean, for the, for the Economics, just as an example, that's really, it's a senior course, so they should have already completed their electives, their, I'm sorry, their history curriculum. If they haven't, and they needed another, another credit, then, they, sometimes they substitute Economics for that, but it's pretty rare that kids substitute Economics for, say, Global Studies, that they should have done in 9th grade.
If I could just mention that three of the four Social Studies electives are dual credit, so in order to get the college credit, you have to be at least a junior. So they would have completed the earlier courses at that point already.
Those are the electives.
Yeah, yeah. So Economics, Psychology, next year, we're gonna start Introduction to Popular Culture. The only Social Studies elective that's not for dual credit is Military History, only because we can't find a college that will approve it. So, that's a real 9 through 12 course.
So I, I just want to say, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask what the students thought about it.
I think it's a really good idea. I, since I went on Journey East as a 9th grader, I didn't have Social Studies that year, and then, for some reason, I didn't have it 10th grade either, so 11th grade US History with you was my first real history class, and it would have been so much easier if I had taken, like, more sequential classes. So I think this is a great idea. And I don't think it'll affect students taking other electives and Social Studies at all, because there's a lot of interest in that, I found.
I'm glad to hear there's a lot of interest in that. I just wanted to, I mean, I, I think this is great, just like, it seems like everybody is in support of it, and clearly, it's just making it more significant, honestly, than changing. But I, but I just can't help but say, given the challenges we've been facing, budgeting and all that, do we foresee any budget implications?
No, because the class, the number of sections will remain the same. We always plan for, you know, the number of sections based on the number of students in the class.
But I guess what I'm thinking is if we are requiring more students, you know, to take Social Studies, and there's still no expectation that kids won't be signing up for electives, are, do we ever anticipate having to support, you know, with another teacher or something, if there's more kids signing up? I understand how there won't be.
I don't see that.
I don't see it, no. I don't see it. I think that mostly kids already take the three, three Social Studies, so it's not a matter of adding kids to this, it's just a matter of reconfiguring the courses.
Going to add more structure to the allocation, the sequence of destruction would be more effective, that's the primary difference, right?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When would this take effect?
Well, it's already started.
Oh, really?
Well, the sequence has started, the requirement would begin for our next year's 10th graders. So they would all be signed up for the European History or Social Studies 2 course next year.
We've already laid the groundwork.
You're still gonna be able to...
We've already laid the groundwork.
So, Class of 2018, yes.
Right, I mean, I think Stephen brought up the point, I mean, you know, there would be a concern if it was going to be in place, and students were already through, you know, their sophomore year, it would make it challenging. So, clearly, I'm sure Durin has that all figured out, so...
Yeah, I think it doesn't make sense to have it sequential, instead of just jumping around in history. I mean, every other major course has some kind of sequence to it, so why not have history and have the same thing?
Good point. Stephen, anything you wanted to add?
I agree wholeheartedly. I think that you should learn history with more structure, because if you learn certain things before other things, it just doesn't make sense. There's nothing that I don't agree with, I guess.
Jane, you once mentioned to me that sometimes you'll refer to the European History course, and students, still be a few students in the class who say... You want to explain?
Yeah, the, you know, the end of World War I, I only cover it once, I cover it in European History, and if you didn't get it, I'm not gonna do it again when I get to US History, because it's, it's time-consuming, and if you only get up to Vietnam anyway, you know, I can't spend the, I can't do it twice, you know, and that was what your problem was, I think, although you did very well. But, but I understand, I mean, and, you know, so I have to give sort of a really quick background, Treaty of Versailles, made the Germans pay, we're moving on, okay? And, but in, in European History, I spent a week on it, so, because it is important, but I can't, I can't afford to do it twice.
And you're just talking about a couple of kids in the class?
Yeah.
Who don't know, because they didn't take it, and sometimes they'll even come to you separately?
Yeah, it's only, it's usually only two, maybe three, at the most.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
So is this curriculum gonna be posted on the school website for people to, to look at? Is it there, or can you post the curriculum for the Social Studies, these three years of Social Studies courses?
Eventually, yeah, not right away. I mean, we don't have it, I haven't even planned it yet, I'm still teaching the old system. And I will be teaching US History, will be still what I'm teaching now for the next couple of years, because I have to wait for the other kids to catch up. You know, we can't just implement this immediately. We started the kids on the path toward reaching US History, but you can't just say, okay, we're not going to, you know, we're going to be teaching thematically now, and, you know, so, so not right away, I mean...
Yeah, my point is, well, all the work that goes into developing a curriculum like this really should be, you know, put up for, so that people can access it.
Totally understand, yeah, yeah.
It would also be awesome for kids who want to take time off for a period of time, so they could know what they, like, you missed, you know, the classes that you missed, if there was a curriculum online, you could catch up on that, you could do that reading.
So right now, you can read teachers' syllabi on their teacher webpages, so you can see what's being taught this year. Next year, you'll be able to see what's taught next year. And the Atlas database, and I'm hoping that we can open the parent portal in the summer, then you can see it in much greater depth, so you can see what vocabulary is being taught, word origins, the aims for each unit. So it's, it's much more descriptive and detailed. So not, it's not the syllabus, it's the whole enchilada.
Of course, yeah.
Sounds like we're heading that direction.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that was the reason for the investment in the Atlas.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I think we take up a new business later. I think we should try to, perhaps, you can take it up now if you want, but I... I think we should try to, perhaps, you can take it up now if you want, but I want to make sure we're moving along as we can.
Which is why I'm, yeah, while you're asking.
Do you need any kind of load on this, or just...
Well, this, my advice is, is under new business, I listed on new business, because...
But if someone wanted to make a motion, now we'd be fine with it.
Yeah, it, it's not changing the actual number of social studies credits for graduation, but it's changing the fact that these three specific course sequences are required for graduation. Follow me? Is that clear? So a motion to that effect to approve that revision of social studies requirements for graduation, would that say it, Jane?
Yeah, I think so, sure.
So moved.
Okay, I'll say it.
Let's, let's make sure Peter knows what that was, because Stephen sort of said it. You want to hear it again?
Just a motion, approve provision.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the proposal to modify graduation requirements in the social studies.
That work?
Sure. Okay.
And I'm just sorry, I didn't hear who seconded it.
Lyndle.
Lyndle did.
You did two down there.
So Lyndle seconded the motion. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Durin, for the work. Jane, thank you. That's great. This is another example of why it's so great having students here, too.
Yeah, verification.
Okay, all those in favor, are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Great.
Thank you so much, Jane. It's been a long call on this.
That was easy.
That was easy.
But you did a lot of work.
This is the only easy part.
Yeah, and now the work comes.
Which is why we don't have it on the website yet. It'll get there.
Yep.
Right, I'm sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Jane.
All right.
Now we'll let you off the hook.
Thanks.
We'll keep you here for new business.
Hi.
So, I don't know if there was anything else from Durin, is that, was that it, Durin?
No, I'm just gonna bask in the delight of what's happened.
All right, so we're not gonna call, call back, calling you back up.
Thank you so much.
Basking.
First point of information, the superintendent's, internal search for a superintendent to succeed me, don't get excited, not until 2016, is, does have at least one candidate qualified, and so I'm inviting publicly, I'm inviting the four students on our board to participate in an interview committee as a student sector. I'm inviting board members as well to express their interest. I think Kelly, did you express interest earlier? We have to make sure we don't have a majority of this board, but I do want to put together some group, small group interviews, to make sure the candidate's properly vetted, leading up to and before the WCSU full board interviews the candidate, or candidates on, on February 25th. You might mark your calendars for that, board members, you're all welcome. That's February 25th, Wednesday here, at Leland Gray at seven o'clock. And it could be possible for the board to make a decision, or not, as the interview proceeds. I will start the interview process this Friday with an interview by the administrative team, the principals. And, yeah, and this is all, I just implore you to, you know, what do you call it, keep confidentiality in the matter, because when we have internal candidates applying for positions, if they are successful or not, that can have an effect on their, on their ability to provide leadership in the future. So, thank you for stepping up. Anybody else cite Kelly interested in that?
Yes, interested.
Well, they're all, I've already talked, yeah, I got, well, I didn't even talk to you, but I could talk to Gina and Nina. Gina and Nina is gonna, is gonna try to coordinate times?
Yeah.
To, you know, so that the four of you be together, available, and then I'll try to set it for you, okay? I do, yeah, I do plan to host the interview, so that the integrity of the process is maintained. Anybody else?
I can do it.
Mike, Mike? Gotcha, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Another issue is, just to keep you abreast of things that don't affect you, or are somewhat related, I've had to submit a letter to the, to Rebecca Holcomb, to appeal to, for a waiver for four school districts to have their own independent bus contract, or providing bus transportation. The reason I mention it to you is, you, you were part of a regional bus contract that is part of what Act 153 is trying to accomplish, greater efficiency. I'm appealing to the agency for this waiver, because in the case of Marlborough, Dover, Wyndham, and Stratton, it is, at the present time, more cost effective for them to provide their own bus service for their students. The other thing I have is copies, which you didn't, I don't know whether you received this or not, I think I sent out just the elementary boards, but copies of my letter, that's the report that appears for the elementary schools. Does anybody want a hard copy of that? I have it here, you can take one and pass it on.
That's okay, there's a...
I did email to everybody on the board here, the one that I wrote for, with you.
Oh, you did, you, you did email that to everyone?
Yes.
I couldn't, I didn't remember uploading to everyone.
Yeah, I think everybody's got that. But anyway, that's, that might be of interest to the students and members here, too, if you want to take a copy. The, it's necessarily a generic letter. I also have a memo here from Rebecca Holcomb, that the administrative team's going to discuss. This is about a teacher retirement bubble, so-called, they expect 600 to 700 teachers probably deferred to retirement to take advantage of this possibility of earning spousal benefits if they stayed in the retirement system, I mean, stayed, you know, contributing to the retirement system longer. That's over now, so she expects that, and encourages school districts to consider people being on the edge of retirement, perhaps being more, more receptive to incentives and so forth. Keep in mind, all board members, there's no retirement age for teachers in Vermont, so, no mandatory retirement age. The, there's another thing about population directions, projections with some graphs, and I will send this out to you, it did go to all board members supposedly directly from the secretary, but I just call it the public's attention.
We'll go.
It did come.
Yeah, okay, so you know what I'm talking about there. That's that waiver letter. Then I do have one other, kind of, important issue. This is a, a letter from Daniella Hall, you, you don't, may not remember, but she's the young woman researcher from University of Pennsylvania, now from Penn State University, who's studying three or four schools in RSU, partially because we have great performance. But, she words, I think, yeah. Anyway, she has, here, I'll just pass for your visual, a, the Vermont Educational Reform Balanced Approach to Equity in Funding, and it's really the research as, as part of Ian Burford, Rowford, Rowford. Anyway, this was apparently to Shap Smith, addressed this letter, I don't know if you wear that, you probably see that in your thing.
Actually, Francis gave me a copy of it last night, so...
So, anyway, that's the, I think the administrative team already has it, I'll pass it along, and if you want to put your name on it, I'll give you an electronic copy of it or something. Anyway, her research will continue. We haven't got an actual report on our own school, our own SU, and the school she studied here, but that's certainly exciting. And that's it. Questions?
I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
Which is, because we have an internal candidate for the superintendent's position for the 16, 17 school year, does that mean that the, is there waiting, or, or advertising it to the, to a, you know...
Depends on how the, how this works. The board is up, the board preserves that option.
Okay.
So the board made the decision to do an internal search first. We did that, actually, the last time we had a superintendent retire, and we were successful in that one, so we thought we'd try the same thing. And we put a, we put a end date on it. We had hoped that if we were going to do an internal search, it wouldn't be part, it wouldn't be a whole new board coming in and making the decision, so we, so we asked Stephen if it was possible to complete an internal search before March town meeting, and he felt we could do that, so.
Plenty of time.
It also allows us that if we were not able to find a candidate qualified internally, then it gave us plenty of time. We are very aware that it's a challenge to fill positions, superintendent positions, and so having the extra time would make a big difference. So, we would probably, if, if we don't find a candidate, we would probably start right off this summer, making, getting the process in place?
Yeah.
To do an external search. And we would put a, you know, we would appoint a committee and make decisions about how that would happen. So, that sort of sequence.
When will the internal candidate be announced, or will it be, or is it some, is that a executive session thing?
If the board makes a decision, that'll be a public decision.
Yeah.
I mean, the decision will be made public.
The, the next meeting that the full WCS board has is the 25th of February, and it will go into executive session for purposes of interview. Then what happens subsequent to that, we can't predict.
Right.
Okay, okay, so nobody'll know until after...
The search is complete.
Okay.
So we'll either say, we were unable to find a candidate, or we will say, we are appointing a candidate for the 2016, 17.
Yeah, FY17.
Right, FY17.
And you have to be, like, voting member on the board to go into that executive session?
Oh, not to go into the executive session, although it's probably, the interview, I mean, you, you must be thinking about how you're doing that interview process. It's typically, the bylaws state that the executive committee can do the, conduct the search?
Right.
But the full board needs to make the recommendations.
Right.
That's how our bylaws are written. We didn't actually go into...
Yeah, I, I think we'll have to take another consultation, but I...
We would have to think about that.
I believe that the bylaws would more than welcome any member of the board to be present, but you would have to be considered in executive session, and not be, you know, and you wouldn't probably be, we'd have to decide whether the general board, every board member is participating in the interview, that gets to be a little cumbersome, like it would be...
Yeah, that's, that would be a mildly concern, to not, you know, make the process challenging.
But if you just wanted to be there and see how the process works, and just listen...
Yeah, I think that we should make it as, we should make it as accessible as possible legally, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Historically, has the search always been an internal one?
No.
No.
The last time, and this time. In, I mean, if you, you weren't at that meeting, we talked about it, honestly, we used to get, we'd open up, we've had a lot of superintendents here, as you know, and we would open up a search and sometimes do them nationally, we would hire a consultant and do them nationally, and we'd get a lot of candidates, you know, applying, from all over the country, and outside even, sometimes. I remember one where we had 75 applicants, or something. That is not the truth today. That does not happen.
That would be surprising.
And, and if you, so, so superintendent, supervisory, I mean, supervisor reunions are, are right now searching for candidates, and there have been some that have had candidates apply, and screened out as not qualified, and then have to open it up again, that sort of thing, which was part of the conversation we had about why we would like the extra time. I, I don't, I think we have a pretty darn good supervisory union here, honestly. I think we operate quite well, considering the challenges that we have to overcome. But for a superintendent to come in here with the multiple boards and the, the challenges that any superintendent would take on, we realized first that an internal candidate who knows the supervisory union clearly, and knows what the challenges are, and how well we operate actually, under those challenges, we would have a better chance of attracting a strong candidate, if there was one within. You know, we, we could open it up and have 10 really strong candidates, but it's not the way it's been going around the state. That's all I can say, so you just never know.
I ran into Frank today and asked him if he was interested.
Now that he just started a new job, like, this is, he probably, I bet, I bet he said no.
I also think it, it provides a little more opportunity for more continuum in leadership, if it's somebody internal who just kind of gets it, and because we went through so many years of so much back and forth, and not consistent leadership, that...
It was a challenge.
Yeah.
I think I've sat through about five.
Uh huh. You did, Howard.
Yeah.
I've served with seven.
I think I did two or three.
And, and the first one I served with had been here 18 years. You know, that doesn't exist anymore, you know, you rarely, when they leave now, they, and come, start again, they don't stay.
If you get a local person who's, who's, you know, settled in the community, like, like they did over in Bellows Falls now, you know, if you can, so hiring, hiring in house, you know...
Well, Stephen's been here a long time.
Exactly, you know, Stephen, you've been the best superintendent we've had here in a long time.
Also, I've also been here twice as long as I ever imagined I could do it, but it's great work, so I don't know.
And just so everyone knows, you know, it's all, if, if we opened it up for a full search, anybody internally could then apply again, if they so chose, so, you know, this is just...
Man, if you can get a good candidate in-house, by all means, it's really hard to hire in a place like this, as I remember, because by the time somebody's ready to be a superintendent, they're, they're already pretty close to retirement, and we, we are not the biggest district, or the highest paid district. It's a small pool, so...
But the other advantage we have is that we have multiple schools here, and we have a really strong administrative team. And we have had a very strong administrative team under your whole tenure here.
Well, we have very good boards, too.
Right.
I commend the boards.
And so I think, you know, we're drawing from...
And that really, really helps, you know, if you don't have boards that are divisive or divided against themselves, then, then your, your leadership team can function, in a way.
Yeah.
So anyway, we'll count our blessings and move on, you know, do the best we can. We'll see how this works out, I'm optimistic, and as I said, I appreciate, yeah.
Well, just a comment that, you know, it's kind of, I mean, that we have someone who's interested is great, because with the talk that goes on about consolidation, and fewer supervisory unions and stuff, you know, it's not a solid, positive job necessarily, you know?
Yeah. Well, that, that is a factor here in Vermont, there is, it'll be, no doubt, time to change in the future. I did, I was, I was pleased to have obtained, on behalf of the board, permission to hire a superintendent, which, which without a study, which, which was not the case in our neighboring SU.
Yeah, Wyndham South West had to go through a study first.
So there certainly is, is, I don't know for what reason, I don't want to read too much into it, but certainly there's confidence that we, we should be able to, to obtain and sustain leadership ourselves as a Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, so long as it's necessary.
I would never guess why the, because I never spoke to her about it, Rebecca Holcomb, who gives, gave us permission, but I could speculate why, and part of the reason is what we were just talking about, that not only are we a lot of multiple schools, but we're a pretty solid, strong SU, and we haven't had the turnover recently, so it would stand to reason that, you know, we look good enough to not have to be forced into a study. I wouldn't complain, had we done that, had we been asked that. So if there's no other questions for Stephen? Okay. Bud is up?
Okay, we, our internet connection has been down, which means we have, did not have access to our APTA accounting software, which does not exist on site, so we're unable to prepare a report for this evening's meeting.
That's regarding the end of year expenditure, the end of year projection?
No, this, this is the, the report to date.
Oh, I see, yeah.
But I will, I have, we will be working on the end of year projections, we've been able to provide those to two of the elementary boards, with our projections as to where we'll end on June 30, so that'll be available for your next meeting.
Can you, can you send those out if they're available ahead of time?
Certainly.
Get to the board, that'd probably be helpful to the board members.
So, so then, we haven't then completed our closing of our folks here at Leland Gray, because of...
The auditor's on, complete the text.
Okay. So, do we have any anticipated date for audit?
Do you want me to speak? I, I talked directly to auditor today. We sent Bud home to try to get internet connection this afternoon.
But that's...
But I'm just saying, so I talked, I talked to auditor, Fred Plessy. And Fred is on schedule to meet with the board, either by phone or in person, at the usual time before our annual meeting. And so he's on target, if we can get the information completed through this transfer from the old system to the new APTA, with regard to one specific part, which is the fixed assets, these are equipment, computers and so forth that we buy, so we can get the profit depreciation rates. rates. That is what, I talked with Fred today, he needs to have, he spoke with Randy, Bud spoke with him earlier in the day, or left a message, that's why he was calling. So, we think we can get this done in a timely way, so we'll have this audit as usual. It is a scramble, we started the auditing process later, and we knew that was perhaps an issue, but we certainly also appreciate, as does our auditor appreciate, that the transition of systems as well as the change in CFO does make quite a difference. So we're, we still claim that we're gonna get it done.
So we're still aiming to get it into the annual report.
Uh, yes, if we can't get it into the published annual report, we will have to add it as a, as an insert when we, when we distribute those reports. We will have a published report from the auditor, as usual, in the binder form, assuming that we, things go the next two days till Friday and, and the Tuesday, as we, as we hope. I can't say why, I know Fred pointed out that Londonderry was also down, we seem to have a connection problem that may be bigger than we can control here internally, at least we weren't able to remedy it ourselves today. It's not good news, but that's the news.
I have a strange question, it may not be germane here, but twice now in the minutes, the budget item for the driver education car, it's been noted that it's been left out of the budget, is that, is this the right place to bring that up?
Are you on minutes?
No, no, well, it is in the minutes, but I didn't, it's not reflected in the discussion.
Bring it up during minutes.
Oh, bring it up, because it's not, I'm not questioning the minutes, I'm questioning whether that's been now included in the budget.
We approved our budget.
Right, I know we did, and, and the driver education, because it keeps coming up.
Well, I'm not sure why it keeps coming up, it was in the minutes because we asked about it at the last meeting.
And it was said it was not yet put in the budget, so I'm just wondering where, what's happened to it.
Right, we, we just got, nothing, because we, we already passed our budget, so-
I, I realize that.
Right, so nothing can happen until we make the decision following the next year. This should be, I mean, it should be on everyone's radar screen, because as Bud said, we're definitely still in need of a driver ed car.
Okay.
But that come up during budget planning.
And just to refresh everyone's recollection, part of the, there has been some significant repairs made to that vehicle recently, did have a discussion with the driver ed teacher, whose name escapes me at the moment.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I have some confidence that, you know, we can get through the, the next fiscal year with that vehicle, but again, let's all try to remember the, the issue when we're together next year, looking at the FY seventeen budget.
Yeah, because this is the second year we've put it off.
No, I realize the budget's approved, but just get it from you.
Okay. Anything else for Bud? Any other comments or questions? I guess you'll keep us up to date.
They've got some more to say when we get to the annual report. I think you met with Peter and so forth.
Oh, Steve, that's, that's coming up.
Yeah, well, the only thing in between is the Career Center piece, so Stephen and I-
Now, what were the highlights, and if you'll remind me, refresh my memory, we-
Stephen and I went to, it was a legislative luncheon at the Career Center, and so it wasn't a normal Career Center Advisory Board meeting, it was just a luncheon, and quite a number of legislators were there.
It was well-attended.
Some were legislator elects at the time.
I know what happened, I had to leave to go to, back to my ATM, but I did raise, once again, my usual issue about trying to figure out a way to fund the Career Center specifically more broadly than based on the fact that if we send five kids, then we lose five tuitions.
Right.
Or if some other school sends ten kids, they lose ten tuitions. We really ought to be supporting-
Bring it up every year.
Supporting the Career Center regionally in a more cost-effective, you know, level way over time, so that they really have the resources to do the investigation.
The Tech Center knows this, and they are sympathetic of the issue, and, you know, it's a, it's a push-pull every year.
Right, so, we'll see, I mean, it, it, the funding process is, of course, under law, so, you know, it does require the attention of, please see, only is on the Education Committee in the House, congratulations on that, and, but likewise, the Senate, Education Committee in the Senate also has to see eye to eye, so that we can get legislation that would really respond to that particular issue, because I reason, over time, if we just had a certain amount of money, a very small, relatively small amount of money, based on our student enrollment throughout the county, or throughout the region that served by, by the Career Center, then that could be a constant, like, membership in the club, and you, that, that institution would always have the resources dependable to do the innovative programs, and if they only have three kids in the program, they don't have to cut it, because they can run it another year till they get five or six or ten kids in the program.
I'm gonna keep looking at this, because it really is, it's been an ongoing issue for too long, and we really need to find-
And it's terrible to pit these smaller sending schools with the Career Center in terms of fighting over the heads of the dollars.
It's been, it's been an issue for a while, but it's a bigger issue when we have enrollment decline.
Yeah.
You know, it just, so.
That was a high point for me, anyway, what's yours?
That first, that first little report we had at that meeting from somebody else in town about that.
Oh, it was, Sam was about that, that consultant, or something.
Yeah.
That we shouldn't talk about.
So it wasn't rela, it wasn't relevant?
No, it was, I didn't think it was appropriate for that sake.
Okay, well, it was, anyway, it was a good, I think it's, I think it's an excellent luncheon that they do every year, not only does the Career Center, what do you call that program?
Food service does it there, yeah.
Yeah, it's the kids-
Their culinary program.
Right, thank you. Does it, they provide the luncheon, but, and serve, but it's a really good time for legislators to hear about issues in schools, and we always enlighten them.
And the advisory board meets monthly, so it's important that we, and they are very solicitous of our opinions about how to improve their programs to respond to our kids' needs, and-
And we do, Stephen and I, we work well down there, I think.
And we had a couple of students attending, too, remember at the meeting, there was actually a student board member, there's a student board member now from Hindale or something that came in that time, so.
We had, I know, Luna Gray student in there once, I thought. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, at what point did the secretary, did Buck kill you, get a say in who we hire for a superintendent?
That's stat, that's not who we hire, it's whether we're allowed-
Well, also approve, no, it's, I was reading that letter, that we also have to submit-
Right, that's statute.
Our candidate to the Secretary of State to get their approval, this is a new development.
No, that's statute.
That was always statute?
Been in place for a very long time, as far as I can remember. This hasn't changed.
I knew when I looked into the position, it was clear to me that I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place, I'm really working for the state and the agency of education, but I'm, you know, you're my employer, but in fact, I'm the local LEA responsible for everything that the state is trying to do, to see that it's implemented, so that's the interest of it.
The state wants oversight to make sure that the candidate is qualified.
Yeah, they're not trying to tell you who to hire specifically.
I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't know if they've ever stepped-
Okay, so this is not, this is not a new development?
No.
But, but what is new is that because of 153, I mean, their, their interest in trying to at least explore larger instructional units, they certainly obliged Windham Southwest to do a study with us, or a study with somebody else, to see if we could combine, and that's happened at Sandgate.
That's legislative rule.
Right, that's a legislative rule that the secretary has to-
Put that on the secretary's plate.
Yeah, that's, that's the recent addition to the, to the issue, and so-
But it doesn't change that part of the statute, I mean, that hasn't changed.
No, the original part was, yeah, it's always been, I'm-
We'll go back and look, it's been a long time.
Yeah, I've always been clear who I had to take orders from, besides my-
Is there any?
We have always, I mean, I have had, I, like I said, I've been through this a number of times, we've always had to ask permission to start a search, and we've always, always had to have the okay when we've had a candidate. As long as I've been here, I've been here twenty years.
I've just been a little more transparent about it.
That, that could be the difference, honestly, could very well be the difference. Stephen is very open and transparent about this process. It's not that anybody wasn't, I think it's just that he, it's his style.
Yeah, it's just that I, I wanna, yeah.
Wasn't an elected representative, I would charge you with working towards putting back local control.
Okay, well, thank you.
Preferably at a hundred percent.
You might regret what you're asking for. Stay informed, stay, keep me informed.
Okay.
All right, anything else for Bud? That's where we were, and then the Career Center, now we're back to Bud.
Just wanted to inform the board, I've got the time scheduled tomorrow to sit down with Peter Goldrick and finalize that information mailer, so we can get that out, and Stephen has already provided you information as where we are, where we are on the annual report.
Don't have any questions?
And the usual plan is just, you know, it gets distributed out to the various public locations, markets and so forth, Jamaica, KND, and so forth.
It's the SU that does that, right?
Yeah, we'll do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's in combination, sometimes Ed goes out and distributes it, too, but Ed McGrath from our own staff.
So they're in each of your towns, if anybody ever-
But they'll be in stacks available, the big, that is, what I'm referring to is this, the full report.
The other, the mailer, which is in here, gets sent to every household through mail write or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Or piece, somewhere.
And we're trying to keep the format as similar as possible, but there'll always be some slight, slight changes.
Yeah, I didn't think this was a good year for us to make big changes in our-
And that's not a good year to make some changes.
Don't want to confuse you.
Even though I am, you know, I am pleased to see that our budgets for all the school districts are, are generated out of the APTA accounting system, so we can keep our codes straight and make sure we're not making a mistake between what we printed and what we have.
Go ahead.
Especially in terms of our actuals.
When do you expect the mailer to go out, the small, the flyer?
He has a date, now, what was the date?
I think we're looking at the, getting at the, the end of this week.
It's going out soon, I think. It, it gets printed and mailed pretty fast, I mean, let me just see.
The turnout's pretty quick on that.
He just sent us an email about it, I think. Annual report, here. Boy, everything, he's really working on the annual report, Peter's working hard. Summary report, let's see. No date on that. The summary should be done first, as it has to meet the mailing deadlines to be in home before the meeting and vote, he didn't give me a date on this one.
We expected to get it, the goal is to get it in the, at the homes, delivered at their, at their homes in time before your information meeting, which is the 27th of January, that's a date, I'm sorry, I've got it written down.
We typically have it in homes less, less than a week before that, or around a week, like, we try to get it-
Five to seven days before.
I think we try to get it in homes by Friday, Saturday, before, or something.
Mm-hmm.
I hope we'll go back and look at when, because we, we have a-
That's logical.
Right, to, to just review what our history is, because it was always Frank that got that stuff going for me, and I can't remember the exact dates.
And we'll, we'll look back on what we did last year.
Yeah.
As I said, I'm meeting with Peter tomorrow on it, so I'm sure he'll, he'll have some information.
We've had many conversations about what's the best day, and should it really go into mailboxes on Saturday, because people pitch Saturday mail, that kind of thing, so that, that is all reflective in the decisions we've made in the past, so if you just follow-
Okay, so we'll follow past practice.
Just cross our fingers, make sure, I mean, you know, we just want to make sure we're informing people in the best way we can.
Sure.
Because the vote is in three weeks.
Right. It's a pretty, once he's done with that, it's a pretty quick turnover, because the people who print it mail it.
I understand.
So it goes out, you know, fairly fast. We just have to, have to have a date, go ahead.
What are the elementary school budgets going to be?
They're all different, but just so they're, they're, they haven't all quite been voted on, Bud and I've been to all the meetings, so we still have Jamaica to go, Townsend voted last night, Newbrook last Thursday, Stratton last Thursday, and the Tuesday before that was Wardsville, so-
Well, Wardsville-
Oh, Wardsville's gonna vote again on the 20th.
Wardsville, Jamaica, both being on Tuesday.
Yeah, right, it's coming Tuesday. So, it's a bit of a scramble, but the deal is, they can't really warn their, but, their vote, vote, their budget, before the 22nd of January, so as long as we get them approved and they can publish the warning, then they can work on their circulars or whatever they want to do, I mean, I, I, the letters have gone in, in terms of the principal's letter or my letter, to the auditors, but the auditors actually publish those documents, but our legal responsibility is to make sure the warnings are properly, proper time and posted with those articles, you know, to elect and such, such amount of money for the, to raise for the budgets.
There.
So, it varies from town to town, I guess is what I'm saying. Now, Newbrook is early, because Newbrook will vote on the Wednesday, not after, not when we vote, but the following week, but they vote from the floor, that joint district, and they meet at, if anybody asks now, they meet at the elementary school, Newbrook Elementary School now for the first time. In the past, it'd been Newbrook, so keep that in mind.
And, you mean, in the past, it'd have been Newbrook Fire Department.
Sorry, yeah.
And, and now it's, it's school.
Now it's Newbrook Elementary, I do see that. But, so there, that board, oh, yeah, that board was last Thursday, they voted on an amount of money, and they are working on their report now, a board member is working on that, heading that up with Scotty and with the board chair, Ken McFadden, and getting the revised budget numbers from Bud to have that work. So you'll probably see that stuff first if you're in Brookline or Newthing, they, they plan on doing the mailing as well.
This is reminding me of a, of a couple of questions. First of all, Bud, this, this piece is ready to be put in, I'm assuming, because I know Peter had been waiting for that, but you've, you've-
I, we got those today.
Okay, excellent. The other question I had is more for you, Durin, I remember last year, it just struck me that, I remember last year, this is 2013.
There you go.
No, I've got 2014 here, I'm just trying to make sure, I remember, last year, I remembered there was something missing, and I was just looking through it, and I, and I wondered about-
Ne cap scores.
Thank you. That was missing in last year's report, and-
And there were no fall scores this year, so the ne cap isn't, isn't given anymore, so.
Okay, so.
So, I mean, what you would like, I mean, I wish it would command, so, but there were no fall scores.
Well, here's what I, let me ask, I mean, here we had science scores, and this was the 20-
Two years ago.
This was the 2013 one, and, and there was nothing last year, and I'm just trying to make sure that we are being as open and transparent to the communities about what our outcomes are, so is there anything we can add into this? This has not gone to publishing. I look to the two of you and say, what do we want to do?
So on the page on the left, I have that completely updated with everything through Science 2014.
What she's talking about is the annual action plan, scores and growth targets.
Yep.
Under that.
Yeah, see, the science-
So you'll have the-
The science was given in 2014, yeah.
Yep, so.
Okay.
Can I just, yeah, so, I mean, I actually sent that to Peter, so I, I, no, I don't know if you have a specific-
You did send it, because it didn't get in last year.
Yes, but, and I sent it this year as well.
Okay.
But I, I'm not aware, is there?
So you sent it last year, somehow it missed it, is that what you're saying?
No, I sent, I, I don't remember if I sent it last year.
Okay, okay.
I sent it this year as part of the principals' report.
Right.
So it just, and, but when I look at the draft, it's not there.
Okay, so, can someone please follow up on that?
Yes.
And if you've sent it, please get that back in, because I think it's really important. We're sharing as much information as we possibly can with the community.
Mm-hmm, happy to do so. So you want the scores as well as the action plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
Just to remind the public, there were, there were no scores to report from this fall.
Right.
Because we're in, yeah, we will have everyone tested by the new system, SBAQ, so-called SBAQ, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium tests will be this spring for math and language arts, for the first time statewide, in fact, nationwide.
Grades seven, eight, and eleven, not everyone.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any comments about this?
Where are they right?
No? All set? Okay, new business, you ready to move on, new business?
Can I, I realize that I neglected to share something with the board, may I?
Yep.
It's very fast, and that is, because when there is trips outside the northeastern United It's very fast, and that is, because when there is trips outside the northeastern United States, I want to make sure the board is aware that we have a trip going to Costa Rica, some 20 people are going during February break, and we also have a trip going to China during April break, about seven people.
We're very aware of the China trip, some of us. Now the public's aware. Actually, Costa Rica.
Is the trip to China a missed chance of this?
Yes.
Tom's not involved.
No. Tom Hunter is not involved, that's true.
Go first.
No, it isn't first.
No.
Okay, we don't need to approve those trips anymore, we all know.
Right, it's just, I do have to inform you.
You do have to inform us, exactly. All right, thank you, Durin. Any comments or questions? If not, candidates for Leland Gray Board Representative Elections this March...
I put this on your agenda because I wanted you to be aware of what...
I'll just tell you right up front, I actually took a petition out, go figure. I did. I am going to be, where is my, where is the page? I'm trying to see who's up. I know Mike's up, because Mike and I are always up the same year. You're up. I can't, why am I not finding it in here?
Who's up here?
It's pretty close.
It's gotta be back there or something. We moved everything this, here it is, it's in the back.
Page 10.
Well, you're looking at something different, Bud. So, last year's annual report, so I'm up.
Here's this year's.
Mike's up, Voman's up, and Lindell's up. Lindell, you've been on that long? This must be wrong.
No, you're up.
I looked it up, he told me to look on the website for the town, it said 2016.
I think you want to consult with your...
Have you been on three years?
Because, did you...
Because I didn't think you were.
No, did you?
I asked the town clerk.
Did she replace someone?
No, no, the reason she did, well, I mean, I can't speak for the town, I can't speak for the town of Brookline, but we did not have a representative from Brookline for such a long time that I assumed when they elected you, they elected you for a three-year position.
They did, and Guy Tantz has said that, he referred me to the website, and I looked it up, and it said I have one more year.
How did we get that?
I came in 2013.
So I'm going back to an older one.
March 2013.
Well...
And I'm looking, and you're not on here. Open seat, Brookline, and it says 2015, open seat, Brookline.
Okay, well...
But that's, no, I'm just saying, that's how it was put in here, because there was no one in it at that point in time. What happened was the person who was in it actually moved out of town, out of Brookline and moved to Townsend, and so, and we were never told, and the person wasn't coming to our meetings anyway.
They told me they've been away for six years, so that's why.
So, so if they elected her for three years, she's not up until...
No, that's what Guy Tantz had told me, I was not up now.
So, we need to correct, somehow, we need to correct that in our annual report before it goes out, am I right?
Yes, we should do that, although I think, Lindell, you wanted to confirm that the article has been changed by the school district.
It is, on the town website, it's listed as my term expires 2016.
But, but what you want to make sure is, you go back in the minutes and see...
Oh, I see.
That you were actually elected, and you should do that like tomorrow.
The minutes of the town meeting, okay?
Right, go to the town meeting minutes and make sure you were elected for the, for the three-year term and the date you were elected, so you know when you were up.
March 2016.
Then we'll confirm it with, with the central office and Bud's and Allison.
I don't mind running.
Okay, I got one other question, Lindell, if you could just note, with Guy. The article, the warning with the articles for the school district meeting of Brookline, which happens on Tuesday, the town meeting day, in March.
Right.
Is when the elections take place. Now, that does specifically state Leland Gray representative for three years to be elected, so that is in error. Your school board has already signed it. Dot Maggio would be the chair, and she could advise me to revise that, okay? I mean, you know, what's happened is, because this is...
Now I'm lost.
Well, well, it has to go on their warning, because we don't have our, it's during the element, I mean, the town, school district, where the elections have to happen at Leland Gray.
And that's where the election happened.
So they put theirs out then, and if they have it incorrectly, they can change that because...
They can change it from the floor, fortunately. I'd be in more trouble in Newfane.
Well, they don't even have to, they could do it before, because, I mean, it's, what they did wasn't right.
Yeah, they can correct it and sign it again.
They should have double-checked.
Well, yeah, and I...
They can, because they should have gone on the minutes, not on...
I think they're right, but I'll, I'll go back and check it.
Okay, well, I know that at Thursday's meeting, they signed a document which was incorrect. Okay, a document to warn the town who's going to elect, incorrect, that's what I'm concerned about, and Guy has that document, so...
Why were they concerned with me?
Well, they're just concerned about the date. What they did is they listed that they're going to have to elect a representative for Leland Gray Board, and you're making the case that that's not true.
Not until next year.
And Guy agrees with you, which is fine, but the board didn't, you were going by...
Maybe you could follow up on Lindell.
Well, I can't till Thursday, he's only there Tuesday or Thursday.
Good, do it on Thursday, it's fine, we're not in...
So if you have any questions, but it has to be, it has to be connected.
I did ask him, it's funny, I went and asked him.
Right, but when you go and check this, it has to go to Bud and Stephen as well, so that we make sure, and the quicker you do it, the better.
At least call Allison.
I might as well run again with all this going on.
Well, I want to make sure that you're connected, so you know they have to re-sign their warnings.
That's right, yeah.
That's why I want you guys to know, okay? We got, we all straightened out with that?
All right, it's good you raised that, Lindell, thank you very much.
There are other positions, Mike?
Nothing dispute there, Mike.
No, Mike's a lifer.
Mike's ready to retire.
Mike's ready to retire? Mike, if you're, I mean, seriously, I totally understand, I've certainly been thinking about it myself, but if you're thinking of not running, you probably should make sure everybody in town knows, so that...
You heard that, right?
And Voman.
Look at the camera.
I did go and speak to the town clerk. I went and spoke to the town clerk, and I said, I really was mean to Voman the last time, and I kind of said, come on, Voman, don't you want to run? And I think I even handed you a petition and got you on for another three years, which I'm deeply grateful for, you've been a wonderful board member. She did inform me that Voman said maybe he wasn't going to run, and I grabbed a petition for you just in case you wanted to run, so...
Chris, if I don't find somebody adequate to take my place, I will run. I'm not just going to walk away, let's put it this way.
Excellent, thank you.
So nobody else come forward?
And, and I did take out a petition, I will tell you that I'm going to be resigning tonight from chairing this board, but I would still like to stay connected, since we're on this topic, I would say, you may all, you may not be aware, but I was just recently appointed to the House Education Committee, which made me feel it's really important to stay closely connected to schools, and while I have a pretty full plate, I really did, literally, I was in Marlboroada Meeting School last night, and I, and then I went up this morning, I came down tonight, I'm going back up tomorrow morning for 8:00 meeting. It is just too challenging to be chairing, so you guys are going to have to find a new chair on this board, but I am going to put a petition in, if the voters in Newfane won't have me continue, that would be great, but we do have other positions.
I found it interesting, it didn't seem like anybody else on that committee had, or their school board, or school knowledge wasn't listed.
You know, there are...
Or appropriations committee or something.
They asked us today to raise our hand, anybody who'd been, or yet earned one of these days, and there have been several people on that committee who've been on school boards. Just so you're aware, it's fairly unusual to have two people from a single county on any committee like that, because, you know, there's enough counties that you can spread it around, and actually Anne Manwaring was appointed to it as well, so we have two from Wyndham County on there, which is kind of nice for us, you know, so it's a very strong committee, and it's, it's, the, one last thing, I don't want to keep anybody's time on this, but I'll just tell you, there has been a bit of a change on the House Education Committee, that the Speaker has chosen to not have it only policy, but to have it policy and funding, finance as well. It'll still, the finance pieces will still go through Ways and Means and Appropriations, but they'll start with the Education Committee, so that there's more of a connection between policy and spending and funding. So, it's been a reconstituted committee, and there are quite a few board members on there, I mean, legislators on there who've been on the muddy committees, Ways and Means and Appropriations, so we just want to make sure it's not all about money. And that's where I commit, I hope. So, anyway, it's a good committee, strong committee. Dave Sharp is chair, is chairing. So, at the end of this, I'm going to resign, I actually had all these plans to bring you a little letter of resignation, I didn't do it in writing.
No time to write it, huh?
I have no, absolutely zero time to write anything, so at the end of this meeting, I will be resigning from the chair position, so you, since you're all here tonight, no one's missing, you might want to, oh, Jeremy's missing. So you can decide whether you want to wait till your next meeting to elect another chair, and I can stay on as the quasi, or you can elect, so, right?
Yeah, it's appropriate to elect at any time the boards can, and, you know, if you're unable to attend, then your vice chair will have to step up, that's Joe.
Right, but if I formally resign tonight, you guys can either choose to elect someone until town, it's only, whoever you choose will only be until town meeting, and then you reorganize, shouldn't say town meeting, but, but our, the, after the elections, which are town meeting. When you reorganize in March, then there'll be another election, as there always is every year.
And that'll be the second Tuesday in March.
So someone just needs to step in for the next month and a half. Month, month? All right, anything else? Who did we forget? We, somebody we forgot.
No.
Did we get anybody?
Yeah.
All right.
Assuming this is correct, but that's what I just told Bud.
It is correct now.
Make sure he looks now to make sure that we correct this one.
It's just Lindell's that wasn't correct, everything else is correct. Now that we have Kelly on here, you filled the hole.
Kelly's...
It's a nice feeling, though.
And is that date correct for Kelly?
And I'm assuming, yes, that's, you were, you were elected.
So I have, this is my second year, so third, because I just came in on year two.
Right, okay.
So, sixteen, sixteen, yep.
So she's up 2016, that's correct.
Your seat, your term expires six, 2016.
Sixteen, yep.
And I'm pretty sure that we had that correct.
It is right here.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that she, that Allison got your, all your, because I remember sending her your information and making sure she... Okay. Set tuition?
Bud, you got a recommendation, right?
Yes, I do.
It says, if not, I reset, so we're not sure.
We did not set it, I wasn't sure, I couldn't remember, I've been to so many board meetings, I couldn't remember.
The budget was developed with an assumption of a $15,000 a year annual tuition, so I would recommend that for 2016.
Is that the maximum allowable, is that what we go on?
I don't know whether we have determined what the maximum is.
Is that what we always were, right, Mike?
Yes. We were at 14, what are we at this year? 14.6, 14.4?
Well, I mean, the way we always came up, that number was...
Why don't you just make the motion at the maximum allowable, and then Bud can figure out what that is.
Well, because I'd like to have a number on what the maximum allowable is, but where is it? Maybe you can find it here.
Wouldn't you maybe remember the tuition?
It's listed, I can't remember what page it's listed on.
In last year's, or this year's?
Last year, I'm just seeing what we have. I'm sure it's right here somewhere. Oh, here we, well, that's, 14.740, is that correct for last year? Tuition revenue assumptions, 14.74, I don't know if that's the right number.
14.740.
Yeah.
That's every school district.
Okay, so that was last, last year's.
14.15, that's where we're in now, 14.15.
So when we get, these numbers, ours was always the maximum allowable.
Yeah, although...
So where do we get that number from?
We obviously varied there, because I can't imagine the maximum allowable is the same both years in a row.
That's not us, that's Jamaica.
I'm sorry, Leland Gray, you're right.
It's gone up every year.
It's gone up every year, and it only went up a little bit, but, yeah.
If I could make a suggestion, if you want to move to another item, if I can get on the internet, I can get the allowable tuition figures from the county website.
Okay, all right, we'll bring it back up, we'll bring it back up before we adjourn, okay? Minutes, this isn't going to take long, right? We don't, the ones from, I thought you did an excellent job, you met us at the town.
Yeah, I thought Bruce did a great job.
So you guys, you've seen them, you've seen both versions, they were emailed to you, what's your pleasure? We put it off at the last meeting because board members wanted a chance to look. So what we'll need is a motion to approve either the long, well, if you guys are okay with the December 10th minutes, we'll need to approve those, if there's corrections to make, you should say so, and then the same with December 2nd, the December 2nd minutes are in two versions, you have to choose which one you want, and you should also state if there's something more or less that you want after reviewing the two versions.
Motion, we accept the minutes as, approve the minutes as written for December 10th.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, I would, just, now that we're under course, we're under discussion, I would just add your name, Bruce, because I didn't see your name anywhere, and we should, minutes are supposed to be signed by the meditator, so if we could just have the addition of his name.
Something like the line, respectfully submitted.
Yeah, respectfully submitted, Bruce Parlin, clerk.
Can Allison do that now?
Yeah, I mean, we'll make the, you know, if you guys, that's a correction I'm suggesting, and if you guys are okay with that.
In the past, I've done that.
I know, it was just an oversight, I just wanted to make sure, because you should get your name on it.
Yes, he deserves credit.
And I think we are actually required to have a signature.
Like respectfully submitted.
Exactly. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Parlin, and it should say clerk, probably, because he is the clerk of the board. Okay. Any other corrections or changes? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, please, with the correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion? One abstention, motion passes. Now we just need to deal with the...
Long and the short?
Long and the short, December 2.
I think the short, I like the short ones personally.
I, here's what I will tell you, the short, I thought were quite short. This is my personal perspective, but I think that they got to the essence of everything just the way the law requires, there's no question about that. If it were me, I would recommend we approve the shorter version, as Joe was just suggesting, but I would suggest also that the board really pays attention to these minutes and makes sure that not only do we read them in a manner that, so make sure that they reflect what we feel has happened at the meeting, but also read them through the lens of your constituents. Are they getting, you know, and ask people, are you looking at the minutes? Are they getting to what, you know, do you get what's going on at the meeting? I know people are watching this, and so if they look at the minutes, I want them to be able to feel comfortable with what the minutes are too, so...
A lot of people are watching.
Yeah, it's great.
It's incredible, I get...
We really appreciate broader community television, because it's a really good service for us, absolutely, service for the community. So, were you making a motion?
I, I was just a guess, sure, I'll make a motion. Move to approve the short form of the December 2nd minutes.
Let me just let him make the motion, then you can, go ahead. You made the motion to approve the shorter version?
The short form of the December 2nd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, you can choose which one, I don't know who I have first. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, you can choose which one. I don't know who I first, Twilight?
I actually did not go to this meeting, so it was interesting to read this.
You're the perfect one.
And I feel like the version that we've had in the past, there's more meat to it. And when I read this, I'm like, oh, okay, I feel like there's more of a blow-by-blow. I don't get to watch it on TV, because I don't, I'm not connected to any of that stuff, I don't have, I'm in the woods, so. So I feel like there's more going on in this that I can read and feel like I was there and I, I got something from it. This is very dry. And for those that are just reading the minutes, there's no meat to this.
So if I can respond to, the concern I have about the meat is how well, whether it's correctly interpreted. And there were some things in the past where we quote people and they are taken out of context, you know, and it's very hard unless you actually see it on TV or you are in attendance to really understand what someone says. So it's, you know, making, putting quotes in the minutes are often, that's typically what the meat is, but it is often very confusing for people. You might even get it a little easier, because you're used to sitting through our meetings.
Right.
So the law is very specific on what is necessary in minutes, not specific on what isn't necessary in minutes. I mean, they don't say, don't do this, but they do say, you have to do this. And for the most part, all the recommendations we get from the Vermont School Boards Association is to, brevity is better than the chance for misinterpretation. Patty?
And I think by the motions, the way they're worded and the vote that comes from the motion, whether it's unanimous or whether it's split, or that kind of gives you the essence of the direction we're going and what our goal is, I think. It's readable, is just my thought.
I just add, you had, you do have an issue now with the video, because it is, there are times when the video's not available. So that might be an argument for when you might have a different standard of what you want to have recorded. But in fact, if you think about it legally, which is what Emily was trying to point out, and I concur, that the only reason to refer back to previous minutes is either to determine who was attending or the fact that it really happened, what the agenda was, but the action is what you have, you know, that's the only thing you, the reason to go back and see what I said three meetings ago is not really relevant to the legal. You know, unfortunately, I don't have total recall, so I can't even read it these minutes. But I'm just saying, it's, you know, that's, that's something to keep in mind in terms of what the use of the minutes should be, or what our responsibility is regarding the minutes. I have had numerous cases at other boards and other meetings where board members were, at least had a difference of opinion about what was intended by what they said and what was in there, and then there's a discussion about correcting that in the minute, so it is.
I remember in the past saying, I didn't see that, I can't, but may, may have.
Well, and of course, the video is now a record that is, you know, is-
Most meetings are.
Is most informative, but I think, correct my wrong, have we had any occasion to refer back to the video?
Well, they send them to us.
Well, I'm just saying, they send them to us, but I mean, I don't have any instance where we actually went back to find something.
I mean, I personally will tell you, I have gone back to the video for a portion of the meeting if I was going to bring something up and wanted to make sure that my interpretation was correct or my recall was correct about something. It's pretty easy to do it online, honestly. You can click right into the area that you are interested in, you don't have to sit through another two hours of our meeting after being here the first time. But it's pretty easy to find it, and it's very helpful to be able to do that.
Well, I gotta say, a couple people in my town I know actually read those minutes, just keep up with what's going on at the school board, so, you know, for the sake of those folks, and I know they're older, they don't, not about to click on a video on YouTube or Rattleboro TV. So, you know, that's another, you know, we, we're here at the meetings, but there are people who are looking at what we're doing solely through those minutes.
So I think you're bringing up a really good point, Howie, and I would refer you all back to Bruce's minutes again, which have more detail in them and no quotes. I think the danger of all is when there are quotes in there and they're open for misinterpretation. It's, you know, if you try to quote someone, you don't really, you can't really always capture it correctly. And so I think that may be one way to take a look at them, try to get more detail in it. I will also remind you all, when Tara was taking our minutes for many, many years, Tara Meinhardt, and, you know, she was a wonderful meditator for us, she did have more detail in there, she did not quote anyone. She was quite concerned when we first started filming, because she would take detail, it was a concern for her. So Peter may need to think about that as well, although you're the one who's been adding more to it. But we don't, we want to make sure that the minutes reflect the actual meeting, and she, she had some concern about whether, and then, and then it didn't happen. I mean, then she didn't, and she wasn't here that long after that. But, so I think monitoring this and keeping in mind some detail around the discussion, not just simply discussion ensued, but, you know, discussion and then a little detail around it, but stay away from quoting anyone, because, unless it's a motion type thing, because it's just too easy to misinterpret. What does that sound like to you guys? And then we'll just revisit every meeting, because we have to approve them every meeting, right? Yeah? So we have a motion on the table to approve the short version and a second.
For December two.
For December second.
And I can't imagine how Peter can keep up with all that we say anyway, that's just got to be so stressful.
Right. Okay, are you ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the short version of December second minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
An opposed, abstentions, one abstention, motion passes. All right, you have anything else? The back to, are you ready?
I've got bills and payroll if you're ready on that, are you ready?
If you're ready, we'll do that, and then we'll do bills and payroll.
Okay, what I'm looking at is the report on allowable tuition per pupil, and this is for, this isn't projected into F Y sixteen, but it was produced in an email from one of the people at the A O E. For Leland and Gray, all right, I just hit the wrong button, and I gotta find Leland and Gray on the spreadsheet again. Please bear with me. Wyndham Central, Leland and Gray, allowable tuition per pupil, sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four. That seems high, remember the, we just got the tuition from?
Bern Burton is fifteen, four sixty or something like that.
Yeah. Now, if you look at, there's two figures, that figure includes costs associated with long-term facility costs, debt, you know, interest and principal. There's another figure without including those, those items, and that's fifteen five fifty-three, which I think gets you more in line with what Bern Burton Academy's tuition is.
Well, it's up from last year.
But am I correct in that it's not certain until February second what the maximum allowable tuition will be, or is that something that is definitely set?
No, this is, this is not for F Y sixteen.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm still learning when these, when these numbers come out.
I, I, can I make, I would like to make a motion that we set tuition at the maximum allowed by the state. Or adjust like that, but I don't think that number was hard and fast yet.
It's always hard and fast when we vote on this at this time of year, when Frank always put it in here before, so he got a number and always told us, as Mike just referred to, that it was the maximum allowable tuition rate, and we always set it at that. It's not like, you know.
So following that, we should be at sixteen?
Not knowing the business manager end of this, I don't know what the criteria was, I don't know why there's two numbers there and which he would have used, so a phone call to him would answer that immediately. But I, I think your, your point is, is correct, and yet I think we've usually always had a number that we publish.
I think you're right, and I just put it off until we do.
I think we have to publish it in our annual report.
And I do have to, I do have a report that has to go to the A O E on announced, on announced tuitions. So I wish I could give more guidance, but these are the only numbers.
Well, then, I think we can, I think there should be enough direction by the board doing what Howie made.
If you have a maximum allowable tuition, yeah, that motion would carry. I mean, that would inform what Bud has to plug in, whatever they call it.
So then will you email, email us when you follow up on what the maximum allowable tuition rate was and send a notice to the board so that we can make a statement about that at the next, it'll be in, it'll be in the annual report. So you want to make that a motion, Howie?
Sure.
Okay. Then moved and seconded to set the tuition rate at the maximum allowable tuition, allowed by the state, I think is what you said. Okay? You all ready to vote? Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
An opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Okay, we've got bills and payroll, so we have warrants dating from twelve five to one thirteen, totaling four hundred and nine thousand eighty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents, and three payroll, twelve five, twelve nineteen and one two, for two thirty-four, two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents. Total warrants and payroll are six hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. Can we make a motion?
Sure. Move to approve.
Okay, as stated, and it's been moved and seconded by the two people who reviewed them.
Is that kosher?
No, it's the appropriate way to do it, it's always good to have that. So Joe made the motion, Patty seconded, and you both reviewed them, everything's good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
An opposed, abstentions? Okay, under other, I am going to do what I said I was going to do instead of my resignation as chair. You guys can decide what you want to do. It's been great, I think, I think I first stepped in as chair in two thousand six, maybe, something like that.
What was that woman's name who was before you, she was Kathy?
Kathy Greve. Kathy Greve, and then she stepped, Kathy was, she was, well, she was, Kathy was the chair of the board for not too long, but a couple of years in between, it was Wendy, Wendy Friesen was before Kathy. And Wendy moved out of town, so Kathy stepped in, she was chair at the time, and then I stepped in when Kathy left. And that was in, I'm pretty sure it was two thousand six. I like serving on this board, but it'd be great to serve on this board under another chair. It's not without its challenges or work, let me tell you. So you're certainly capable of making the decision tonight to elect another, or you can elect a chair at the beginning of your next meeting, whatever you want to do. But I'm resigning tonight. Right?
That's right. I, I suggest.
So you can make a recommendation.
Yeah, well, I first recommend the board accept, what if we don't accept your resignation? Let's not make things more difficult, go ahead, what's up?
Well, we still have an exit, I, I mean, I will resign at the end of this meeting, I mean, effective at the end of this meeting, because we still have to go to negotiations, and I don't want to dump this on to anybody else right tonight, but I, but what do you think about them? Should they wait?
I think you got a lot of the board members here, so.
Well, all but one is, are here, so.
It's pretty unreasonable thinking you have better attendance at the next.
I'd like to accept your resignation effective the end of this meeting.
Sadly.
With regret.
With a lot of regret.
Thanks, Howie.
I'd like to nominate Paul.
There's a motion, I'm sorry, there's a motion, you really have to. There's a motion, so if there's no comments or further questions, all those in favor of the motion?
I do have a comment.
They'll just sob quietly. Is there a second first of all?
I thought, somebody seconded it.
I believe I seconded it.
All right, Mike, good.
When I started on this board.
We started together.
And through several chairs after that, prior to you, these meetings routinely went to eleven, twelve o'clock at night. I will always remember you for shortening them.
Well, thank you.
Pleasure.
Not quite short enough in my mind, but that's, that's the next person's job, shorten them even more.
And all the committees, those committees for everything.
Yeah, we had, we had tons of committees, Howie remembers. Yeah, so, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
An opposed, motion passes, when this adjourns, I'm over with chair, but I do, I do appreciate staying on this board. I hope the town people will be willing to keep me on. I hope, because it's really important to be connected, honestly, I will just say that.
I don't think you can resign without the gavel that was handed to you, you need to pass on to someone.
I, I will pass it on if you guys elect someone else tonight, and I think there was going to be a motion.
I'd like to nominate Joe. Joe Paul.
Since I'm still acting chair until the end of this meeting, there's a motion to.
Is that a motion, or is it?
It's a nomination.
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 Other nominations?
I mean, do we do that?
That's how we do it in town meetings.
But it's an appointment, not a normal.
If the board chooses to elect, which I guess you do, and just move up, then you're gonna have to.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
Gives you the option of having a vice chair elected tonight too, which would be helpful.
Oh, that's right. It does seem to, you know, just go down the line. Okay, so if there's no other nominations, all those in favor of Joe being chair at the end of this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
An opposed, you want to do a vice chair and clerk, maybe?
Bruce is still clerk.
Yeah. But that does leave us an opening for vice chair, so.
You can.
I recommend the board elect a vice chair, it's important to have that kind of.
It is helpful to have a vice chair.
It'd be a student member.
What are the duties of the vice chair?
The vice chair steps in when the chair, basically when the chair can't. I don't really lean on him a huge amount, but it happened lately a little more. Nominate.
I'd nominate Patty.
Oh, it's only for a month and a half.
Vice chair.
Yeah, that, that is something you should all remember, I mean, this all has to start again.
We organize to get in March.
In the end of March, or middle of March, okay. So Patty's been nominated to be vice chair, any other nominations? If not, all those in favor of the motion for Patty to be vice chair starting at the end of this meeting?
Aye.
An opposed? Your own? Okay. So.
That's when I say I won't make the next meeting, right?
That'll be on your shoulders, I'm afraid I might not make the next meeting. I can't keep coming back and forth, I'll tell you, it's gonna be hard.
I think we're gonna have a snow day in the next meeting.
We will, but is there an executive session?
I can say something briefly about negotiations, we're very short. Joe, you think we need to meet?
Do you feel like you need to report to the board, or do you want to wait?
Can we wait?
We can wait till.
We can wait. We can wait till after Thursday, next time.
Okay, so next meeting, so there's no executive session tonight, it's important that we do note. Right, that's part of the whole process, and you're gonna have to be as new as that. Okay. So the, the next meetings, don't leave until we know what these are. The budget information meeting, typically what we do is we have, we do the superintendent evaluation either just prior to the budget information meeting or the annual meeting, and then the other one, we do the audit meeting.
Right.
So those two meetings need to be held, scheduled. And I'll let you guys decide what you want to do, because I may not make it down for, especially if it's earlier than seven. I can get down here maybe at seven, but committees don't get out till four.
May I ask, will we have sufficient attendance to make a quorum possible at six o'clock on the twenty-seventh?
I have a board meeting that usually goes till six.
You'd be late, going around the room, Bruce?
But I mean, six thirty, I could.
The budget information meeting is Tuesday, right?
The budget information meeting is right here in the library.
Oh, okay.
And the reason it starts at seven is so that the board, if they have to do pay orders or anything like that, I don't really see any reason why the superintendent evaluation needs more than a half an hour meeting, probably. But that's up to you, so, so can you make it by six thirty?
Is that a Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
You just have to be in the room, the actual information meeting doesn't start till seven thirty. We've tried to keep that, that's where it's warned, and we try to keep, that's what was in our warning, and we try to keep that consistent with the annual meeting time, because the annual meeting time is a little off. There has been some feedback to me about the timing, and, you know, the only way to change the time of the annual meeting, I think, is to bring it up at the annual meeting.
At the annual meeting, have an article.
So if, if there's a push, I mean, it was always held traditionally ever since Leland and Gray became a union school district. They held it at seven thirty, that was very typical back then, I know, because my father was chair of the board, I think then. But seven thirty meetings were very common. Today's seven thirty meetings aren't as common, they usually start earlier, so I don't know if you guys want to have that discussion at the annual meeting, but right now, the annual meeting is at seven thirty, so is the information meeting, the board is warned to meet at seven that night in case there's bills and pay orders or anything that needs to be done that night, or if you have something.
Sounds like six thirty worth then, for it. So we do, I just want to, can you show hands where we have a quorum, six thirty?
On the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, okay, we're okay, good.
Okay, so six, so this will start at six thirty for, well, it's seven for a regular meeting, six thirty executive session for super evaluation. And then the annual district meeting, if that's when we're gonna meet with Fred.
Fred, yeah, that'll have to be six thirty or something, I suppose.
It takes, we usually forty-five minutes max.
Yeah, it doesn't take.
You know, the, the issue is around getting a conference room call, we often do it in room twelve upstairs, because that one's easier, so we arrange that.
As long as it's the traditional clean audit that it's been the last bunch of years, it takes ten minutes.
Yeah, I don't have any indication of anything arising from the auditor, so.
What's really important is everybody's downstairs in the gym.
At seven thirty.
Before seven thirty, so you can greet your people who are coming in, I think it's really important to make sure, so if, you know, I think we used to plan on forty-five minutes, just in case everybody had fifteen minutes to get downstairs.
So six thirty again?
I'd call it six thirty again, I would make it safe.
Okay, so, six thirty for the audit meeting?
Yeah.
On February third.
February third, and then seven thirty in the gym, main gym, is the annual meeting.
So those of you new to the board, that there's a published booklet that is the audits of multi-place reports, actually published in this previous version, if you want to see, but at least some of it's published, and the purpose of that meeting is for you to ask questions, the auditor, the auditor will lead you through the report and highlight the important issues.
I'm assuming Bud has written the management letter? I'm assuming Bud has written the management letter?
I can't say yet, until he hasn't, until he has a list.
You haven't written the management discussion analysis? That's the key when you're reading the.
It has to be in response to the audit.
It's the business manager who writes the management letter and gets it put in there. So that's what we should be looking at.
Yep. If I move on, I've got other dates here I want to call our attention to. So I presume the board will want to meet at a regular meeting, perhaps, the following week, February 10th.
Don't forget the, yes, well, I mean, yes.
They're gonna vote Australian ballot, but that annual meeting will not probably.
You can already vote, by the way. The ballots are, I've already voted for Leland and Gray's budget vote, budget vote. So there, he doesn't have a date on here, but did you pull up the date? It's the 10th?
It's the week, it's the 10th, yeah.
There's a meeting, regular board meeting on February.
Our regular board meeting time would be February 10th, 7:00 p.m.
7:00. That's your regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So add that to your list in your calendars, and then this is the executive committee meeting, WCSU board meeting for superintendent search.
Interview, yeah. And then we have, and then, you know, you can go on to the next, which is town meeting elections, that varies. All of you are on town meeting day in your respective towns, Wardsbury is the one day before, but the second Tuesday in March would be when you're gonna reorganize your own board here, right?
Always.[1600.46]